We will start off tonight with prayer from Councilman Copeland and the pledge from Councilwoman Garcia.
For those that would like to participate, you may bow your head. Gracious Father, we thank you this evening. We thank you for another opportunity for us to come together as council community to work on the betterment of our great community. Father, we ask, oh God, that you be with us. Oh God, let the Spirit of wisdom, knowledge, and love be within us this evening, oh God, that we will make the better decisions for our greater community. We thank you for continues to allow Saginaw to be a light within this nation, within this state. Father, we ask that you continue to touch our city staff, all those in the city of Saginaw. Father, we just ask that your hand of protection, your grace, will continue to cover us and keep us, Lord. We give you all glory, honor, and praise, and we pray this in your son Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, call him, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams, I don't see.
He's at the door. He's coming around.
Councilmember Paul, I don't see. Mayor Potembench.
Present.
Councilmember Osajash.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Flores, I don't see. Councilman Copeland.
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present.
You have six members present at this time.
Got seven. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone for coming to our city council meeting tonight. This is a housekeeping. If I can get everybody, the council, to please silence your phones and your tablets. Audience, can I ask that you do the same, please? Okay. Madam Clerk.
We have a few announcements this evening. Early voting at 6:18 CAS began this past Saturday and continues through Sunday this week. Hours are 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., except for this Wednesday, when the hours will be 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The city clerk's office is offering extended hours tomorrow and Wednesday until 7:00 p.m. And will also be open this Saturday and Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for absentee voting and voter registration needs. During the 40-day period that the clerk's office is issuing absentee ballots, a person approaching voters to encourage them to vote for or against a candidate for ballot question is prohibited within 100 feet from the entrance to City Hall. This includes directly or indirectly making reference to an election, candidate, or a ballot question, and the distribution of any type of campaign literature, slate cards, or write-in candidate information. Election Day is next Tuesday, November 5th, and polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Voters planning to return their absentee ballot to the clerk's office are highly encouraged to utilize one of the city's drop boxes or drop it off in person rather than mailing it to avoid potential delays in delivery this close to Election Day. Halloween trick-or-treat hours are 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. this Thursday. Yard waste collection runs through the end of November. As a reminder, yard waste must be placed in paper yard waste bags or large trash cans labeled with a yard waste sticker and placed near the curb on your regular trash day. Stickers are available in the clerk's office or at Public Works. And lastly, rubbish bills are due this Friday. Mayor, that takes us to public hearings. The rules, just read the rules.
Next, we have our public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is for the public to address the council as a whole and not for councils to hear comments from the speaker regarding a specific action being requested. Speakers are limited to their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please state your name and say if you support or opposed to the subject matter for the public hearing. The designated speaker will be allowed 10 minutes, and every speaker thereafter will be allowed three. There, this is not a question-and-answer period. Council cannot answer you back. Madam Clerk.
Our public hearing is regarding the request to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district at 505 Mallard Street.
Do we have anyone here to address?
Good evening, council members. Mayor, my name's Alex DePerry. I'm the, call it the developer of 505 Mallard, which is on the corner of South Jefferson and Mallard in the Cathedral District. It's a four-story building that was built in 1926 with 41 apartments. The building will undergo a complete renovation, which includes new windows, insulation, electric, plumbing, all mechanical. At this point, it will be an all-electric building. Everything will be high efficiency. We are, oh boy, we're following Mishta guidelines and the PACE program. What else? I guess I can't ask you if you have questions, so I'm not sure what else to say.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this subject? Is there anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, manager Morales. My name is Steve Hensley. I'm the Community and Economic Development Director with Saginaw Future. Saginaw Future is the economic development organization for the county of Saginaw, as well as the city of Saginaw. I'm here before you tonight to ask for your support of Fifth Avenue Limited Partnership, as discussed and presented by Alex DePerry. He is seeking requests for an obsolete property rehabilitation act certificate regarding the redevelopment of the Jefferson Apartments that's located in the Cathedral District at 505 Mallard. The redevelopment of the building, which has been vacant for several years, will support a current and vital need within the community, providing 37 new units of housing, apartments to be exact. Under the exemption certificate, the property can receive up to a 12-year tax abatement on all improvements, except for local and state. School taxes must be paid in full. The owner will still pay the existing base level of the taxes, including local taxes. In summary, the taxable value of the property is frozen for the duration of the exemption. However, under consideration for this evening is to first establish the property as an obsolete property rehabilitation district. So in working in accordance with Alex and his project, we do support the next steps in this effort and believe the redevelopment of the property will positively impact the neighborhood, the surrounding area, and the community at large. So we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Number two, do we have anyone else who would like to speak to this hearing? Last and final time, do we have anyone else who would like to speak to this public hearing? I need a motion to close the hearing.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
We should have public input.
Speakers, you will remain courteous and respectful to the audience. You will be called to the podium by the clerk, and you have three minutes. Please, please, get everything you need to say within those three minutes. Madam Clerk.
The first person on your list canceled prior to the meeting, so we will go on to the second, Bernard Lua.
Good evening, council members and Saginaw residents.
Good evening.
Okay, mine, I think, was a little more personal. I don't know, but it can contribute to this. I bought a property in 1402 Bliss. I've been a Saginaw resident for about 17 years, so I moved to Bay City and saw my house in Saginaw, but I have a property in 1402 Bliss. So I think it's 2021. I didn't know whether I have to register the property as vacant, which I was asked to. So I registered the property, and then I was told, well, you can't register your property until you pay your taxes, which were the summer taxes. Then my question was, why is it connected to the registration of the property with the summer taxes? So anyway, the matter went to the court, and you know, I was able to pay that through the time, and we got that closed. So following that, I was not able to pay the registration fee to December because I still had the summer taxes, which were not paid, coming then. So, and, you know, the property needed so much work to do. I probably put over $55,000 into the property right now. I don't have any money. It was any saving I had any money of getting from work, so that's why I put it on property. And I don't want it to sit there. I wanted to finish up pretty quick so that the property can be used and I can be able to pay the taxes. So I still on the court right now because I'm trying to pay those registration fees. I do want it to pay, but I can't pay it before the taxes are paid. So I didn't know what's the connection between trying to get a service and trying to pay your taxes in that matter. That's why I'm here. I want to talk to them downstairs, and I think one lady told me, well, go talk to the council. So that's why I'm here. I still have another property as well, so even that one, I'm not going to be able to pay a registration fee. And I think the cost to the registration fee, I think, is a 100% fee to the registration, which kind I don't think, whether it was fair, but I mean, I don't have any choice. So I'm just trying to make the Saginaw City, you know, nice by trying to contribute something to it.
Someone from that department will contact you, because we can't talk back and forth during this time.
Okay.
And so the department heads or someone will get back with you and explain what's going on.
Okay, I just tried to talk to them. So many of them, and nobody was trying to tell me any direction I can move. Before, I just had my house, and I was so easy to come to pay my water bill, pay my taxes, and I'm gone. But when I get involved today, so I kind of wasn't getting nowhere. Nobody was trying to refer me to anywhere I can go.
You have a department. Somebody will get with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Inez Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and everyone else.
Good evening.
I'm Inez Williams. I'm here regarding the Youth Employment and Recreation Network Program. We've been waiting for a meeting over a year. We have followed all the instructions of the city manager regarding speaking with our past fiduciary and also requesting information of the final financial report. All that has been completed, and we're still waiting to have a meeting. Several correspondence prior to this last one was submitted by the city manager asking us to put all of our documents together, and we would receive notification when we could share this information in a meeting. That never happened. As a citizen in Saginaw County, the city of Saginaw, we deserve to be heard as well. We did everything that you have requested of us, and if there's anything else that we're supposed to be doing, just let us know. Let us know. We are in this together. We're not angry, bad individuals, bitter people. Daily, we wake up, we want to be better. We want to be able to show others that this community, we work together, we collaborate together, and we want the very best for our youth and for our families, for our community. So with that being said, according to all the information and the instructions that the city manager has given us, we followed everything to the T. We completed everything. But if there's anything else that we need to do so we can move forward with the Youth Employment and Recreation Program, please let us know. Because in the report, it's not accurate. Not sure where all these numbers have come from, so that's why we have to meet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Dwayne Volmer. Onto Jacqueline Jones.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
I would like to share a story about a little boy named Bryson Buckley. My son Marcus Buckley was murdered in 2012 with my nephew Freddie Rico Harvey Jr. The hardest thing in life is knowing that my grandson doesn't have a father. He goes to events. When he's at school, he sees students with their dad, and that makes him sad. And he comes home, and he talked to his granny about why did they kill my daddy. That breaks my heart that I have to show my son pictures of his father. I have to tell my grandson gunson stories about his father. And here's the thing, nobody is stepping up to the plate. Somebody took that from him. They took his daddy. And nobody, nobody is stepping up to the plate to take care of Bryson to make sure no male figure is stepping up to the plate to make sure that Bryson is okay. Gun violence destroys the family. I just ask that you guys do whatever you possibly can do. I know you think that it won't happen to you. I thought the same thing, and it did. It's not about lifestyles. And I want everybody in here to know, they are more than just victims. They are somebody's son, somebody's father, somebody's mother, somebody's brother. They matter. DeJuan Byrd. Moesha Simmons, somebody's daughter. Tyrone Simmons, somebody's son. Elton Simmons, somebody's son. Tommy Ford, somebody's son. Temarius Stewart, somebody's son. Temarie, somebody's daughter. Jacqueline, I'm sorry. Deontay Laurie. John Harrison. Romell Montgomery. Henry Ford. Kalia Harris. Quincy Jones. Dennis Mays. Equavious Moulton. Darius Horace. Omar Morrow. Dequan. John Winneton. Kenya Collins. Ryan Clemens. Mario Burgler. Deshaun Skinner. Devon Williams. Dequan. Lee. Macquarie Smithers. Somebody's family members.
Thank you.
Enough is enough.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tamara Tucker.
I stand here, family advocate. Also, as a community empowerment. That equals face. All these faces, they're wiping, they're drying their tears. It doesn't get better. It doesn't get easier. We're here as a united stance because the pain. We came out because we want you guys to not only see our faces, but to see our children's faces. It doesn't have to be like this. There's resources out here. I'm standing here. My brother was murdered. I was 15. 15. I've had to live with that. My brother has been dead longer than he has been alive. He was 17. And then years later, my daughter is murdered. Somehow, some way, it's the same family. The same family. Name came up. I was willing to accept that, but that's not what God told me to do. He told me to stand and fight, because all these families are wiping their tears. Somebody wiped their tears. I just had a church member, she came, she consoled me for my child. Now I have to go and console her for her family member. There's got to be a better way. I'm not leaving Saginaw out of fear, never. I'm standing here because I have grandchildren here. My daughter's children was split up. I'm raising her youngest son. Her other two children are 14-hour drive away. I'm lucky if I get a flight that's reasonable, and that's a five-hour, plus the flight and the drive over to see them. So if I'm dealing with that, and I'm still able to hold my head up and continue to forge on and fight for these families, somebody else got to be able to stand and fight. We don't get any compensation for any of this. On those days where we feeling like hell at the back of our heels and on our heart, we still got to get up. We still got to go to work. We still got to take care of families. What is there left but to fight? We have to fight. We have to get resources here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tiffany Owens.
Good evening, Mayor, and fellow council members. This is not easy for us to do. It's not easy for us to stand up here and talk to y'all about our kids. My goodness, Lord have mercy. We just need help, like I said before. And it's not going to change. I literally, I hate this city because this city took away something that was so precious and dear to me. I've been living here all my life, and I have to bury two of my kids, and they out in forest line. They say you can't question God, but I do, because, yeah, why me? Why my kids? My kids were great kids. My daughter, me and my daughter, we were going to school for our bachelor's degree. We were nine classes away from finishing. She wanted to be an entrepreneur. She had a clothing line. My son was 12 years old. He knew already at 12. He was 5'7" when he passed away, 5'7" in a 10-and-a-half shoe. My son wanted to play football for Michigan State, and he talked about that all the time. And I had to live with that every single day, wondering what type of man he would have been when he grew up, what he would have looked like. And... We just need y'all to do something. Like, I don't want another mother to have to stand here where I'm standing at. Like, it's not fair that we all are here, but I do not want another parent to have to go through this trauma, go through this pain. And then my son, he went from being the baby boy to the only living sibling. Like, I pray for him more than I do myself. The pain and the trauma that my son have to face every single day without his siblings is heartbreaking. It's so heartbreaking. And I don't know what it's going to take. I don't know what we can do. But we got to do something, and I'm not going nowhere. I'm here. And so something happens. Something has to break in this city. It has to. It has to. They say this city is cursed, but I don't think it is. It's a lot of life here. A lot of life. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Matthew Carpus.
Matthew Carpus, Saginaw Police Command, President, Association. Three minutes is not a long time, a lot of time to get up here and talk. Certainly not when someone with a different viewpoint than yours often gets an unlimited amount of time to speak. You get to ask questions, they present their stats and give their spin. But when the victims stand up, that's all the stats I need to see. Four years ago, both police unions, all the sworn members of the Saginaw Police Department delivered a 46-1 vote of no confidence in the ability of Chief Ruth to run our police department. It was a cry for help. No one listened, no one cared, nothing changed. A year later, in 2021, we came before this council complaining about retention issues, asking, no, begging you to look in the Y offices we're leaving our department. During this time, crime was still out of control. Special meeting held in this chambers, one mother, I believe it was Ms. Tucker, held up a bullet similar to the one that killed her daughter. Lots of things were said, lots of emotion, but still, nothing changed. Four years ago, when we delivered that 46-1 no-confidence vote, we had 51 officers. Of that 51, 18 are gone. 18 gone. Although our survey was done anonymously, the one officer who had confidence in the chief's ability to do his job was a sergeant who openly admitted to voting the way he did. At the time, I gave him credit for having his personal convictions in the face of everyone who felt differently. Fast forward to a month ago, for those of you who don't know, our chief created a deputy chief spot in our department. No interview, no written test, or any other type of process, the chief handpicked his new deputy chief. It happened to be that lone sergeant who had confidence in him four years ago. I'm not saying the sergeant with no college degree or advanced law enforcement training is unqualified for his $100,000-plus a year job, but with no process in place, it seemed the lieutenant with a master's degree who went through the FBI National Leadership Academy should have at least been given a chance. It's not me, by the way. It's truly sad that this is our game plan. Replace officers with administrators. Someone should explain to the victims why our department, rather than hiring officers and detectives to try to prevent or investigate crimes, instead need another administrator hired under what has the appearance of questionable circumstances. Someone needs to look up nepotism in the dictionary. At the end of the day, officers feel hopeless. They either leave our department or suffer in silence. Very few get up and speak because they get blacklisted and they feel nothing's going to change. Most victims in this city, I think, don't speak out either. They either move out of the city or they suffer in silence. Very few come to these meetings because, like officers, they feel you're not going to do anything. There's a crime problem in the city. You have a problem you're trying to figure out, and you're going to the same people repeatedly to solve the problem. Not only isn't it being solved, it's not getting better. It's trending in the wrong direction. We need to try something different. To start, we need more officers and less redundant administration. Thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
We'll start tonight with Councilman Flores. Councilmembers, you have three minutes as well.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my last council meeting. For the rest of my term, it's been a pleasure to serve everyone in the city of Saginaw and thank everybody for coming to speak publicly. It means a lot to us. Something that I had started to do last year during Gospel Fest was read the names of everybody that had been murdered in the city of Saginaw. So I want to do this one last time and then urge any colleague that's still here after the election to take that up and say everybody's name that are still on... that are still unsolved murders. So if anybody has any information on Keishon Banks, Kwan Lee Quay Smithers, Mario Volger, Pamela Whitson, Ryan Clemmons, Roy Whitson III, Cortez Hampton, Mazzy Rudinson, Jonathan Mar Van, Ronald Pacheco, Delance Stevens, Omar Morrow, TZ Thomas, Daquan Mims, Janelle Whittington, I'm sorry, John L. Whittington, Darius Horson, Dennis Christopher's, Jason L. Porterfield, and Khalil Harris. Please call 1-800-422-5245. That's Crime Stoppers. Again, 1-800-422-5245. That was Ms. Tucker that held the bullet up about three years ago. The thing that hurts me the most as a public official is that we lose Saginaw's future constantly throughout every year that I've been here. And a lot of the folks that I had just murder victims that I just listed off were fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And so I think about what type of men and women they would have been continuing, moving forward. It's the saddest thing that I've experienced on council. Just some closing remarks. Mexicans matter. When Mexicans run, they win, just like in 2022. Please do not forget us. We all deserve a seat at the table. Before I had ran, we had not had a Mexican on in some time. But let's continue to engage and build bridges and speak with different communities. Next, I've not ever missed a meeting, except for one when I had COVID and they called me and told me not to come. Being here matters. No shade on anybody, but you can't do your job unless you're here. I've skipped vacations. I've driven from Kentucky. I've walked here from North Mason. It matters to be here. It really does. I've seen some votes fail and people just needed to show up. And then last, I love my son. His birthday is tomorrow. He will be twelve years old. He's a huge reason why I'm stepping down. Twelve-year-olds, you know what I mean? They need a lot of care. So I'm doing the right thing. I love my city and thank you for letting me serve you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening, City of Saginaw. First, I want to start off with our mothers who are here this evening. Thank you for being here. As my colleague has stated, I am going to miss a meeting to be with my family. Because I've made the, I'm thirty-one years old. And after this year, I had one of the most intense conversations with my wife about the importance of my family. And because of that, I made a decision that if I have to be away from my family, last meeting that I attended, I moved away from my family when I was six years old. Never had a chance to meet with them. And I had the first time opportunity at our last meeting to meet my family. And so I am well aware of my responsibility as a council member. But at the same time, I'm still going to take care of my family. So I appreciate the comments about being here matters because it's the same reason why I voted no to extend our votes because I knew I was going to be absent. Because when my voice has to matter and I have to make sure my voice is lifted, I am present to make sure that my voice is heard. So mothers, thank you for being here. I do have some questions during our manager's report that I am going to follow up because I watched online. And my one question is, after that meeting, has there been anything scheduled with these parents? We just awarded over a million dollars for something like this and we have to have the conversations now. So one, thank you. And then also to the City of Saginaw, I want to say, as I come to the end of my first four years, what a journey it has been to learn about this community and myself. I am appreciative of our city's staff, the patience and care that you've had with me during my journey as a first-time elected official and the City of Saginaw, as I said before, giving me the opportunity and the chance to grow and to learn. And I'm thankful for the City of Saginaw. And Ms. Owens, I want to point out something that you said that struck my heart. In the tears and the grief that you said, you said, "But there is life." And that is something that I'm taking away this evening. Then hearing, I can't sympathize, I empathize because I haven't. I can't try and connect. And one of the mothers that is here, whose son passed, was murdered, hearing her voice, I want to thank you. I don't want to make promises that I know I can't commit. But the one thing that I want to continue to speak power to is that we have life here in our community. And whatever we can do to make sure that the future generations know that there is life still here in the City of Saginaw, I want to be able to do that. So thank you for your words. Thank you for all of our public speakers. And thank you again, Saginaw, for this opportunity to serve. I hope to see you next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so very much, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for coming to your Saginaw City Council meeting today. I'd like to thank all the speakers. And I'm gonna try to be very swift. In regards to the Yarn Program, I too have been waiting for over a year to meet collaboratively regarding whatever went on, going on, might went on or might go on later. So hopefully, we will have that meeting. And I've been asking also for that meeting for over a year, regardless of, you know, how it ends up. Definitely, everyone needs to be heard. Also, I'd like to say condolences. I won't say the young man's name, but one of our babies was killed the other day. Eighth grader. Excuse me. That hurt. And I can concur with a lot of you parents and family members here about violence and gun violence in the family. I won't get into my personal journey, but I want to send condolences to the Bentley family and to all of you all. And you all had left our last meeting. I'd like to get a card or some sort of information. Definitely would like to stand with you. I have stood with you with other council members when you have stood and had rallies in regards to murdered children. So I definitely would like to see that continue. I definitely will also have questions during the manager's portion in regards to some of those dollars because those dollars need to go with those dollars need to help and help the most. And that's right there, you know, right there, the people that have suffered, you know, in regards to gun violence, murder, violence in general. Also, I'd like, I'm gonna be probably during the manager's portion, get some more information in regards to the upper dollars in the home repair that we're gonna try to continue to do coming up soon, I hope. And again, thank you so very much. You all have a blessed rest of the day.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to our speakers that came out tonight, especially the mothers. Again, thank you for coming and with your expressions. Going through mourning and grief myself, it does not compare to what it is you all are going through because of the loss, the way the loss has come to you. So I, like Councilman Copeland said, I can only empathize because grief is hard, period. But what you all are going through is, there's no words. There's no words. So thank you again for coming out. And I want to share that this Saturday, there is a march and rally, Enough is Enough, a community's cry for help, silence the gun violence, this Saturday at one o'clock at the Riverwalk behind SVRC. And that is in support of you all. And I encourage the city to come out, show your face, show your support. Myself and Councilman Balls just left the unity rally over at Mount Olive. It is, it's a wonderful thing to keep this awareness going. And now we just have to figure out, how do we strategize and put it in certain pockets of the city to where it's impactful to everyone? So I thank you for that rally as well. I would like to say for the last speaker, Matthew Carpus, what we need to understand, it's, and this is just my, this is my personal. He gave his personal opinion. For employees to air out business that happens, I call it in-house business. I'm not for that, never been for it. Even when I was a patrol officer, I've never been for doing that. What hap- like I tell my sons, what happened at home, stay at home. You know, we handle business inside the house. So because it's only a person's perspective, their experience. And when you don't have the other components, the other people there to give their version of what happened, you only get one side of the story. And that, that happens far too often. You won't catch an administrator pretty much anywhere, anyone in management, pretty much anywhere, coming and airing out things publicly about what happens within their department. So, and not to say that his, whatever he has isn't valid. I'm not there to judge. But I do think that we can do better when it comes down to how we put business out. But lastly, again, thank you to the mothers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Balls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My heart goes out to the mothers. Feel, really feel what you guys said. I really feel it in my bones. Because being a mentor for over thirty-eight years, dealing with young men that don't have fathers at home, just having a mother at home. You know, I see the dynamics that was happening here in our city when kids don't have somebody to tour them through life. You know, young men need men to tour them through life to show them how to get through things without picking up a gun, you know, when settling the situation like that. You know, when I was growing up, I can remember occasions where they made us put our dukes up and the best man won and then they made us hug each other after the fact. You know, I still remember that. And some of these guys I got in fights with are some of my best friends today. You know, we didn't know nothing about picking up guns and settle issues. You know, so my heart goes out to you because we got issues here in the City of Saginaw. And the only way it's gonna happen is to make it better unless we find somebody to mentor these young boys. Like the lady said, her grandson don't have a male to even be around. I've been a mentor for thirty-something years and I'd be more than happy to see your son can sign up and maybe get him in the Big Brothers and Sisters program so we can have a counseling session that goes on too during that time, you know? With the big brothers, they counsel the mentor and they counsel the little guy and they counsel the parent of the child so we can try to make them grow up to be productive members of society. I'd like to thank Mr. Perry for investing the money in the City of Saginaw. This is major when somebody come in and take an old building with forty-seven apartments in it and fix it back up. I've worked in that building. When we cleaned it all up and took all the vestiges and laid out of it and stuff like that. Some of those are one, two, and three bedroom apartments. And it's gonna be fabulous, I'm sure, when they get through with it. He's investing a lot of money here. So he has a lot of faith in the City of Saginaw. You know, and I think that we need to have some more faith too that maybe we can alleviate some of these problems if we try to put more positive things out there. Him like Plant is hiring twelve hundred people. Maybe we can get some of these guys working. Maybe they're gonna be involved in crimes. Because I think a lot of these killings got a lot to do with crimes, drug trades and jealousy and things of that nature. I had a young guy come to my house that was willing to hire my grandson because some girl liked him, liked him more than he liked her. He was ready to hire my grandson. You know, so it's obvious that kid don't have nobody to teach him about how life should be, you know, and how you get alleviate those issues. So I want to thank the ladies for coming out speaking. I'm gonna continue to be a mentor in the Big Brother program. And I'd like to thank anybody that's investing any money here in the City of Saginaw. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Ossage.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thanks for coming out tonight. I just want to recognize that we have two of our Saginaw Commissioners in the chamber tonight. Commissioner Tanny and Commissioner Coney is in the chamber. And we have talked about what we're talking about tonight. I want to thank the mothers who have come out tonight. I did come early tonight. We, I want to thank you for the time that you took to talk to me. I did not get a chance to talk to you the last time because a lot of you had left. But I did take the time to come early tonight to talk to you because I knew you were here and I wanted to hear what you had to say. This is a hard topic. I do want to thank you for, you said something tonight that really touched me and you said, "He was murdered." It wasn't a car accident. It wasn't an illness. And when you said that, that's when, that's what really brought tears to my eye because I've been trying to put myself into your shoes. I've been trying to, when I lost my mother. And the last time we were here in the chambers, I tried. I can't. And I think about this every day since you were here. And I've thought about this before you even came here. And I want the people of Saginaw that are listening to this, I want you to hear these mothers. I'm pissed. Look at what you've done to their lives. We're gonna do something about it. You have hope and so do I. I'm willing to do whatever I can do. We don't make the laws in this chamber that can change some of the things that we talked about out on the sidewalk. There's a lady in the chamber also tonight here and I'm glad that you're here, Tammy. You said something to me yesterday that really changed some of my thought process too. There's a whole damn lot more of us that care in this city than the people that don't care. Somehow, we gotta convince the ones with the guns that think that this is the answer to the problem. Councilman Balls, you just spoke about something. And there's another story that I heard in this city too. Somebody looked at their girlfriend wrong on the beach and they thought that picking up a damn gun and shooting at that person on the street, this actually happened in the City of Saginaw. And I heard about this story too. What the hell is going on? I'm trying not to swear. Un-freaking-believable. That's all I have to say. But I am in your court. And if I'm here next month, I promise you, we're gonna start working with our state legislators. We're gonna work with the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. I just wanna, losing my voice, I'm trying to get it back. Just want to say it's been a pleasure working with you, Michael Flores. I know when I got on, you were one of the first persons that I caught. And we made history. We're the first Latino and Latina to serve on the council together as a whole. I think the last time was like in the seventies when we had a full-term Daniel Sosa. So there is hope for everybody. When I got on council, I didn't know if I should do it, what I should do. And I was like, no, we need help in our city. So I took the leap of faith and I said, you know what? I'm just like you, a regular citizen in the community. I do a lot of volunteer work behind the scenes that I've been doing. But if I can do it, you can do it. So if you want and you want your voices to be heard and you want, come and try out for council, you know, anybody can do it that lives in the City of Saginaw. I'm a prime example, hardly no campaigning. But, you know, if you're adamant and you love something, you do and you're passionate, you're gonna put your best foot forward and make sure. The one lady told me, hey, you know, you get it? If not, come back. And I told her, no, one of these seats has my name on it. And here I am, going in three years, next month, and it has gone by so fast. And I just enjoy being on council. You learn so much. And, you know, when we got together, I'm like, oh, we don't get together? We don't meet? So a lot of these community events, we run into each other. I'm like, oh, you guys are here too, you know? But it is really hard work dedication. It's not just about being here in council every other Monday. There really is work behind the scenes. But I just want to say to you strong mothers, I appreciate you guys coming. There is hope. God only gives his toughest soldiers as tough as battles. And I know, like I said, I was a domestic violence. It's totally different than this. But you have to be tough. And every day is a different battle, anxiety. You know, do I want to face this person? Do I want to see this person? And we all fight our battles, different stories. We all have a story here to tell. But when I see this, it breaks my heart because I'm looking at this and no bullet. It's not black, white. It's not Mexican. It's everybody. And I see these faces and I know these people that are on here. This young girl, Jessica Gomez, she was murdered. I was coming back from out of town and I found out, broke my heart. She was pregnant with a baby, about to have- with a baby, about to have a baby, newer. I mean, the one guy here, he's been gone for probably ten, fifteen years. I know Ms. Noel Casadis, he got murdered over there by the post office. And, um, you know, it's, it's not stopping unless we be the voice and the action, and I wanna see it be done, so let's do whatever we need to get a committee or whatever going, because it's not gonna stop until we show these people that we're not about them doing this to our families. It's not gonna happen. So let's take a stance, keep praying, have faith, and move forward, 'cause Saginaw's moving forward. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Next we have council, I'm sorry, we have Pro Ten Ben.
Thank you. Excuse me. Well, good evening to everyone. Um, thank you to all of our public speakers, and of course, thank you, especially to the moms here tonight. Um, as I said to several of you, I'm very sorry that you have to be here, but I appreciate that you are. Thank you, Ms. Tiffany, for sitting with me and telling me about your beautiful children. Um, I've always said, uh, being on council is equally, uh, as rewarding as it is challenging. And, um, I can easily say that the most challenging and frustrating part is listening to the grief and the pain, um, and not really always knowing what to say, or what to do. Like Councilman Nastash said, there are a lot of things that have to change, and they're not things that we get to fix via ordinance. Um, but I just want you to know that my heart is with you. Um, if I'm here in two weeks, if I'm not here in two weeks, um, anything I can do to help, I am here. Uh, Ms. Tamara has my phone number, Tiffany has my phone number. Please don't ever hesitate to call or text. Um, something does have to give. We have been far too comfortable, far too long, with miserable police officers, frightened citizens, grieving citizens. Um, it's easy to forget when things quiet down, it's easy to dismiss it, 'cause it's hard, it's painful, and it's sad. Um, but we do, we have to come together, and we have to do something collectively. We need our sheriff's department, we need our prosecutors, we need our police. We need more than what we have, we need people who are going to advocate for more than what we have, because when a detective doesn't call you back, it's not fair, and it's not because he doesn't want to, it's because they are so overworked. Um, if we can please make an effort to make sure that all of these ladies have the contact information for our victim services unit, especially because it's a newer unit, and it's a newer program, and we have so many people who have lost, a lot of people for, over an extended period of time. I think that we probably have had people who have lost folks and don't even know about those services. So if we can make sure that we're connecting them with that, I know it's a very small start, but it would be a start. Um, and beyond that, uh, thank you to Mr. DePerry for restoring my, one of my favorite former homes. I used to live in the Jefferson apartment buildings, and to know that those are gonna be affordable rents again, close to what I was paying back in the late nineties, um, makes me very excited. And, uh, just to my colleagues, and to the citizens, and es- especially to our incredible staff, thank you for being so wonderful, and, uh, allowing me to work with you guys and serve you guys for the last thirteen years. Thank you.
Well, they're a tough act to follow. They're a tough act to follow. Hear me, hear me well, four years ago, I sat at this table and got sworn in, my very first term. I declared prayer over this city. Say what you want. Prayer does change some things. What we have to do, and I said it then, and I'm gonna keep saying it, we gotta learn how to work together. The world needs love, not hatred, and it starts with us. We keep saying we wanna change things. Ladies, we're trying to set a meeting up now with your group. We wanna meet with you, meet the city manager, Chief Roof, the vic- crime victims, and help. So since everybody wanted to know, we trying to set it up. We wanna make sure that you're here, 'cause we wanna connect you to where you need to be connected. There's a lot of things that I don't know, and I'm quick to say it. But what I do know is this, when you hurt, I hurt. And it's not a game for me. This is not a game. I hear people talk about be there, be there, be there. Listen, I been there, done it. Bury two brothers. Hurt it. One died naturally. Same thing. But at the end of the day, it ain't nothing like a mother's love. It ain't nothing like a mother. So, hear me, hear me well, I declare over this city, and I've declared it for a long time, it is a new season, and it is time for us to stop feeling sorry for ourselves, and get up and put our boots on. Can we change everything? No, but we can sure make a good try at it. Ladies, my heart goes out to you, Mr. DePerry, thank you so much for restoring us, at least starting our projects fixing. When I come back in here next week, two weeks from now, it'll be, it may be a whole new council. It's been my pleasure, Councilman, for ever, even though you gave me the flux sometime, it's been my pleasure. But all work and no play is not worth it for me. One thing I've learned that being in this seat, I got some big shoulders. I get blamed for everything. Some stuff I don't even do, I don't even know what you're talking about. But I did it, but I own it because I'm a team. These eight people up here are my teammates. If they say go, we go. They say stay, we stay. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I was, uh, going to say, what you reported, we are trying to set up that meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I took your time, I'm so sorry.
No problem, but we, a- as the mayor said, we wanna include her, and, um, not to promote one program over another, but help has been very active, and they're, they're moving forward with their program, and they have a r- really good program, so if any of you, if we don't have your contact information, and you wanna attend, contact my office, and let me know phone number, email, whatever is the best way to communicate with you. I think we've reached out to a couple, but make sure you get us that information, so we can include you in that meeting. Um, and we'll get that scheduled as, as soon as we can with the most of people there, and they have been very proactive, so, um, I have to give that. And they do have mentorship programs and a lot of resources, and it is one of our grantee programs. There's another one as well, um, but I think they may be a little bit farther ahead right now with this one. So, um, we'll make that meeting happen. Um, I will say, uh, regarding the police department, um, we have been meeting with the Police Officers Association of Michigan Union for probably a few years now. Um, we offered that to both unions at the police department, POAM took us up on that, um, and we have been meeting with them, and one of the subjects we talk about is, how can we make their jobs better? How can we make it easier? And retention, we have a meeting this week with them. If the COAM wants to join that meeting, they're more than welcome, uh, to do that as well. Uh, invitation still stands. Um, it's been pretty productive, I think, meeting with, uh, the POAM president, vice president, and they bring other members of their board, if, uh, if they bring whoever they want. So we've been doing that for some time. And I do, uh, also want to mention, we had, uh, comment about the new, the home program, the extension of that. So, the applications for the second round of the Saginaw Rehabilitation Program, uh, we're doing the furnaces again, they're gonna be available on the city website. With the amount that was allocated, we expect to be able to install about forty furnaces. And these are the, the details, Saginaw Home Rehabilitation Program, it's accepting applications for the second round of furnaces, they're available on the city's website. They're gonna be accepted online from October twenty-eighth through November fourth. For special accommodations, including residents without internet access, please contact nine-eight-nine-seven-five-nine-one-two-zero-seven. We can send this to council members, too, so you'll have that, uh, for assistance, and the staff will help, uh, with those applications. Similar to the first round of the furnace program, in order to be eligible for the program, the applicant must be a city of Saginaw resident, must own the home for a minimum of one year, and, uh, must fall below the ARPA household income limits. So we'll get that information to council, so you can share that, and we'll get everything on our website as well. And, uh, a couple of items that we did have, uh, the past few weeks, we did have the third annual, uh, We Love Saginaw Businesses Trunk or Treat, so I do wanna thank all of the staff and the businesses, the DDA, the SDC, who helped, uh, plan the event, and, um, staff the event, and all the businesses that did participate, and the council members and, and staff as well. So thanks for all the work, for putting that together. There were probably over a thousand kids there, I think. Um, we did, uh, maybe more, so, maybe, maybe underestimating, but we did have, uh, a lot of our staff there for Touch a Truck as well, so it was a great event for the kids, and, um, I think it'll continue to get bigger and bigger each year. Um, at the event, we had the individuals from SCAP, if you recall the presentation at the last meeting. Uh, they were here last week at the SVRC, um, to get community input about the development of the Riverfront Park in the various stages. And they were also at the trunk or treat with a table with information, and taking information, uh, taking suggestions about the park. For those that did not get an opportunity to stop and talk with the group, um, you can complete a community input survey, that's also on the city's website, it's on the front page right now. Um, that survey is available until November fifteenth, so if you didn't get a chance to see them or talk to them, and, uh, you'd like to provide input, please, uh, go do that on the city's website. Um, we also had a presentation at the DDA, which I think, um, a number of council members would be interested in. It, they did have their ribbon cutting, it was Covenant Healthcare. So Dylan Hellis, the Covenant Healthcare Neighborhood Engagement Specialist presented to the DDA about the Covenant Healthcare Neighborhood Revitalization Program. So they did the ribbon cutting, they're working with Habitat for Humanity, and they're allocating five-hundred thousand dollars a year for the next five years for neighborhood revitalization in, in the Covenant neighborhood. They're helping, uh, employees get into new houses in the neighborhood, helping with renovation assistance, and engaging current residents in neighborhood revitalization. So they have, I think, three new houses that they've, um, built there, and I think they've started their, um, their, uh, renovation assistance program as well. So that is pretty cool to have a, um, a community, I think a community citizen, I would say, that's doing work in the neighborhood to help bring it back. Um, that neighborhood has seen a lot of demolition, especially on the Hill Street corridor, so it's nice to see those new houses, and it will help, uh, their employees in the neighborhood as well. And then, um, they've already bo- been doing a lot of work, but I do wanna, um, thank the clerk's office for their, all the work that they've done already, and are going to be doing in the next week, uh, open on, uh, they were open last Saturday, I think they had over a thousand people, uh, come in, more?
Early vote center.
Oh, it's early vote center, over a thousand, but, um, they'll take, uh, you can vote absentee at the clerk's office anytime, so thanks for the work that they've been doing. That concludes the management update.
You done?
Yeah.
You can tell us the election year. Uh, we have any questions for the city manager? Councilwoman Copeland, you had a question?
No, he answered it.
Can he answer your question?
I answered my question.
Yes, Councilwoman?
Thank you so very much. Uh, what I would like to know, and I've had a few people, not a whole lot, but a few people, in regards to the, uh, home repair through the ARPA, um, they met qualifications, but then there were other qualifications added. Is there other hidden qualifications that they must meet? Uh, I'll just give you one for an example. Uh, I had a young lady tell me that, um, she didn't use enough water in her home, or something like that, and that, um, she had been helping, I guess, with her elderly somebody. And, um, she didn't spend a lot of time at the home, but she'd owned it for like over twenty years. But I'm, I'm sure it may be some more into that, and I'd like to just talk to somebody in regards to that, because that's what I was told. I'm just saying what I was told, I'm repeating that, that, uh, she was disqualified for the amount of water that she did not use.
Oh, that sh- that water usage isn't, isn't, um, requirement, there, unless you're not living in the house. So if there was no water usage, indicating that nobody was living in the house, that, that could be an issue, which someone does have to live there.
Is that low amount of water?
Yeah, yes. But, um, yeah, we can, uh, set you up with someone.
Can I read you the names and all that stuff later? Okay.
Yep. Yeah, they do, people do have to be current on their bill, property tax bills, yes. But other than that, there shouldn't be anything else. But if you could provide, send the information, we'll get in contact.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Copeland.
Uh, Manager Morales, I do wanna, there was something stated during the public comments, and I, I think it speaks to the, our hiring process as a city, and I, I want to know is there a possibility to clear, clear that out, clear it up, in regarding to that new position, that's a hundred thousand dollars, that it seems that it was just an appointment and not an application process? It, I don't know union, but, so I, I wanna make sure, is there a way to clarify that? So on my end, that I have an understanding, 'cause I did, I am concerned about that, if other officers didn't have that opportunity.
So the deputy chief polit- position is a non-union position, it's always been at the discretion of the police chief? But we can, we can give you more information about that history, too.
Yes, I have some follow-ups. Yes, thank you. I'll phone you. Thank you, Madam.
Yes, Councilman.
You said always been, isn't that a new position?
Uh, well, historically, the police department, I think, had two or three deputy chiefs, that was, so bringing back positions, um, s- even prior to our pretty significant cuts, and I'm sure Councilman Williams can give you a, a significant history about the department, but, um, we had, uh, one time, I think, two or three deputy chiefs. Uh, when I started with the city, we had one. We eliminated that, I think, um, about the time when we reduced the number of police officers to fifty. Since that time, I know it was mentioned that we haven't added police, we've added several police with the help of the city council, and, um, Covenant Healthcare's paid for several police officers, too. This is one that's added back in, um, so this is the only deputy chief position we'll have.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams. Councilman Nastash.
What exactly does a deputy chief do?
I'll let the police chief answer that.
Yeah, he, he was outdoors. What exactly does a deputy chief do?
The deputy chief, uh, runs the department, just like the chief would run the department. In my absence, he runs the department. I'm gonna be retiring in a few years. Somebody has to be the chief when I retire.
Okay. I, I'm just asking, 'cause we don't have all the job descriptions in front of us.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Councilman.
So just to, you know, to refer council back to that, we have a deputy public services director.
Got deputy.
We have a deputy clerk.
Right.
We have a deputy police chief now. I'm sure our fire chief would like a deputy fire chief.
Right.
You know, and to be, to be fair to the council, um, we're not involved in the day-to-day operations, and so we don't have all the data, you know, so we have questions sometimes to make sure, to see, that is your job, and so we have questions. Thanks.
Let me approach you.
I was just gonna volunteer the comment that, uh, one of the things that our city manager had prioritized probably quite a few years ago, um, was to rebuild our staff in a way that we had a succession plan for every single department, because we had had so many losses, um, through attrition, and a lot of historic knowledge that went along with it. So, um, I would commend, uh, Manager Morales for making sure that these leadership positions are built back into our budget, and, and they're done in a sustainable way, so, thank you, Tim.
Yes, Councilman.
I, I'm glad there was some clarity to, to that. Also, uh, there was mention about, uh, retention, and from my understanding, the past several years, the Saginaw Police Department, we're a battle that has been consistently hiring, uh, consistently putting recruits into the academy, uh, because retention is not just a Saginaw police issue, it's a national issue. Um, I can say personally, I'm fortunate to have veteran officers that, that are there, but trying to keep people at a department when they see other opportunities that are available elsewhere and whatnot, and for whatever other reasons, that they elsewhere and whatnot, and for whatever other reasons that they want to leave, it's a very difficult thing to do. But in order to combat that retention issue in the city, Chief Ruth has been consistently putting recruits through the academy. So if those recruits leave, trust and believe, he can find a way to put newer people in the next academy, to keep people on the road. So that needs to be stated for clarity.
Yes, Councilman Boss.
Listen, manager, can we get a report on the opioid money funds, what we've been doing with that, how that's been spread out in the community, where it's been going? Has it been going to local businesses or wherever? I'd like to know. Can we get a report?
Yeah, we'll get something together for you.
And can we get a report on the minority part of contracts that the city give? Our tax dollars come here, our federal monies come here, the money we made go back to the federal government. The federal government says that some of that should be going out to minority contractors or minority workers.
Yeah, they've been working on that. I think Phil did send me something that I can get to you for that.
I appreciate that. I mean, because it's so disheartening to be to be on the city council and when I'm looking at everybody that's working, pulling the water lines or what have you, they don't look like me. I'm sure some of these guys out here can use some jobs, you know what I'm saying? Especially the ones out here that don't have nothing to do. So I would like to see something happen in that area. Thank you. I'd like to see that report too.
Yes, Councilman Copeland.
And this is, I find a question right now. So with the transitional leadership, and I get it in some of our key areas, is there a reason why we, let me ask this question, let me. So we find out that our chief will be one day retiring. Is that position posted for someone else who would be interested to apply for that position? Or because we have our transition program, every position that we had is basically from within and we don't have the opportunity to bring outside knowledge to develop from within our systems?
No, it would be posted.
Okay.
Yes. So with, you want me to?
No, she said when I apply, I said, ah, I don't want to.
I just checked.
Yeah, it will be posted, so you can see from the staff in here, Mike Grineer is new, came to us from Grand Rapids. That position was posted. That was the director of water and wastewater. So we post it. People inside want to apply, then they can. If not, then they won't. But the department head positions are typically posted.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Okay, so my other question would be, and it was brought up this evening and I've, we've talked back and forth in regards to having a meeting with some of the young participants. When is that going to happen? That needs to happen.
Well, we have done our grant closeout with the fiduciary. I think that was a couple of weeks ago, talking through it with them. They need to sit down and meet as a group themselves to work through the membership of that was here. And that's what we talked to them about and I do think they should handle that through themselves.
I think they, I think from my understanding, they would like to meet and have council members there to, so they could hear all facets of what was going on and so they'd be able to have a conversation in regards to what went on with this particular program. I don't think, I don't think, I don't think they needed to come to city council to have a meeting in and of themselves. They would like to address the council and/or the city manager.
Well, I will.
And I've been asking for that meeting for over a year.
Yeah, I did ask the rest of council and most of council, majority of council did not think we needed to meet at that time. So our contract is with World Outreach. That was the organization that was allocated ARPA dollars. So we have a contractual responsibility to work with that organization and follow through with them. That's what we have been doing. So my comments to the other year and are always, year members are always, please contact World Outreach Campus Leadership to discuss this grant.
Okay, so this probably be my last question for now, well, in regards to that. But if you have an organization that hires a fiduciary, so doesn't that entity, they still have some stake in those, those ARPA dollars and what, and, and, and the, what's the word I want to use for that? How they're, how that organization is being viewed?
Okay. I mean, I don't want to get too much into the details of one specific grant.
I don't want you to say anything you shouldn't say.
But it is.
Say what you can.
It, the sole responsibility for the financial reporting and responsibility to the Department of Treasury is with that fiduciary. So it's incumbent upon them to work with any other member of that organization to obtain the information that's necessary to report into Treasury. So we're at a point with this grant where we have spent hundreds of hours working on reconciling the grant amount that is, that was utilized, that was documented or eligible. And we have that down to, I think, the lowest possible number that we can.
Can that be disclosed right now?
I'm not sure what it is, but we can get a memo for you because our next, I'm not sure if this part's done yet, but our next step was reporting that on the federal system, putting in the final report and the outstanding amount that was deemed ineligible. And then the next step is for the fiduciary can comment on that amount.
Okay.
So we're at a point now where the city and I think World Outreach are in agreement on what that outstanding amount is. They're aware of the next steps that we're doing and they're aware as much as they can be what their next steps will be with Treasury. Because they, they're the organization that has signed the contract, so they would be the explanation, the one that could explain. I don't know if Treasury allows the other organizations involved to comment or not. That'll be up to, I think, Treasury.
To Treasury, okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. For the interest money that, from ARPA, are there reporting parameters or does that need to be, how is that facilitated?
Reporting parameters for the way.
Do you have to report to the Treasury, the amount?
No, you don't have to report to Treasury on that item.
So it's just the city's money?
It's the city's money, subject to the same type of rules that would be the, applicable to general fund dollars.
So that it took it from ARPA and so there's no longer the ability to give ARPA interest money to ARPA projects?
Not to non-public property type entities. It would be the same as any general fund dollars. That's what, that's what information that we're getting.
From the Treasury?
Yes. And so, for instance, if we had ARPA park projects, certainly you can do that. Cemetery projects, things like that, you can do those. Giving out grants is not something that you do with general fund dollars typically.
Just stuff from lost revenue type of projects?
Okay.
Councilman Boss.
You telling me that those, the interests on the ARPA dollars belong to the city treasury? Ah, that's what you're saying?
It's.
You sure of that?
Well, of course, it's city funds, yes.
Okay, but are you saying that the city council don't have any control over those funds?
Well, you control all the city funds.
Okay, I'm just saying, because I think that's what, I think that's what the council is talking about. Can we allocate those dollars to any other grants, rewards?
No. That's not part of, so, I mean, it, it has to be spent the same in accordance with state rules for city funds. So you can't spend city funds on private property, that type of, you can spend funds on functions that the city would normally do.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilman.
City manager, at the last council meeting, there was a lady here, one of the mothers, and she talked about a lot of activity that was going on over in the Birch Park area. Do you know if we've been actually patrolling some of that area a little bit more heavily? Have we had any more patrol cars over there?
We've had it tonight.
Okay, thank you. Just wondering.
Yes, Councilman.
In Birch Park?
They were in Birch Park.
Okay.
They have contracted Birch Park to do security for the last five years. They've been doing it in Birch Park. Birch Park just did a $10 million upgrade to their facility last Friday. All of the cameras are up and running, every single one, okay? We've been working in it for years. We can't be there every single minute.
Right, I know, I understand.
We can't be. And their gate is getting fixed and the holes in the fence are being fixed also as part of that project.
Good. Yes, Councilwoman.
I'd just like to concur with Chief because I have actually been speaking to people, the vice president, over all of those entities, go as far as Illinois, et cetera. And they told me the cameras were down because they're doing renovations, et cetera. So yeah, we talked about, I talked about the fence, I talked about those extra trees, everything. So I have been having my boots on the ground, so yeah.
I will add one piece. I have been speaking with them about license plate reader. They can put a license plate reader on the way in and the way out, two cameras, maybe about $8,000 a year for those to operate, those cameras on an annual basis. We'll be able to tell which cars are coming and going and that'll probably stop a lot of the problems in there.
So you're saying they are going to get them?
We're, we're working on it. I'm talking to them about it.
Yes.
Yeah, Chief, that did come up from Jackie who was sitting in the second row here because she had brought up that we had allocated money for cameras and I really didn't have an update for her. Because I said I know that we allocated money, I know they were ordered, so I really didn't have anything I could tell her, so.
We're working on a lot of good, positive things in the city to help fight crime.
I know.
Sometimes you get negative people out there that don't like what we're doing.
Do you know if we, do you know if we did get a lot of our cameras ordered and up? I, I do see some of them up.
We're in the process of putting more cameras up right now throughout the city.
Okay, okay.
They should be up within another month or so.
And those, are those license plate readers as well?
They are.
Thank you. All right.
And we do have a grant to have more put in.
I remember you talking about that too, yeah.
Yes, we're doing a lot of proactive things in the city to help fight crime.
Okay. And that, that actually does come up at the neighborhood association meetings that I had too, so I tried to give that my update to you as well. So thanks. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk.
This is to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city web page on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Do I have any exceptions? All those in favor, sign the top by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our next item is board commission and committee reports.
Do we have any community board reports or commission reports that we'd like to report? Madam Clerk.
On to appointment of board commission and committee members.
I need a motion to approve one through four, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and supported, any discussion? Here we now. All those in favor, sign the top by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our next item is resolutions. The first is establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district at 505 Millard Street.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes. Now, when we put this, which is obsolete property rehabilitation act, those funds, the taxes that we get from those funds, will that come into the coffers the regular way or will be on a cer, another way? Come back in.
Go ahead, Lori.
Here she comes.
So they come in like normal taxes, but they're not on the adult form tax rule, they're on a special X rule. So it's money above the tax cap, 3.8 million.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve?
Yeah.
Okay.
All those in favor, sign the top by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our second resolution is approving the state trunk line maintenance contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation for a five-year period ending September 30th, 2029.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
What is the trunk line?
Mr.
Max, you matter, man?
Don't ask me. Man, you gonna catch me up.
I know it's in the back.
Look, here he comes, you gonna catch me up in that.
We got about 300 miles of road in the city, so 18 of those are state highways or trunk lines, so it's a state highway.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You okay now?
Most definitely. They're gonna pay to fix them, yes.
Any more questions? All those in favor, sign the top by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Picture it's a miscellaneous business.
Do we have any miscellaneous, any motions that need to be made?
I just want to thank my brother for serving. Thank you, man.
You making this a motion?
No.
Are you making that motion?
I ain't gonna make no motion because I may not get approved for the rest of the council.
Okay. I need the motion to adjourn.
Oh, he had something.
Pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was going with the, you know, he's always the one to say less adjourned.
Right.
Thanks. I have a motion to reduce our water bill penalty fee from 10% to 5%.
Second.
Yes, the motion on the floor has been moved and seconded, discussion.
So this is something that we had talked about back in 2021. There was originally tabled for a study. I had originally proposed that it be 1%, which is ambitious, but given the fact that we have additional funds to be able to offset any type of rate increase, I think that this was a problem that was never fully addressed to the city of Saginaw. We have the highest rate for a penalty in any other city. In Michigan, a 5% penalty fee would not increase rates incredibly. And this is for residence specific. So that is my motion. I hope that the council will entertain it.
Yes.
I guess I would like a pros and cons report, how that would affect the city fiscally by doing that before making a decision.
Any other discussion? Yes.
Yeah, I would like a report in comparing us to other municipalities as well. I'm also going to concur with Councilman Williams, how is that going to affect our budget, our fee structure?
Yes, Councilman Boss.
I understand, you know, everybody want to get a report and all, but it's going to come down to one thing and say the people who have the less is the ones that gotta pay the most. And we studied beating up on a little guy who wanted to have no money. If the guy could pay his water bill, he'd have paid the damn thing when he should have paid it. But it obviously come up, or maybe priorities, I don't know. All I'm saying is, I get tired of beating up on the little guy. Little guy had to pay the most interest when he buying a home, a car and everything else and the big guy pays less interest. So I'm just, I just want to throw that out there.
Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. We originally had tabled this, so we could get a study in 2021. I think either we didn't get the study or we just referred to the study that we had when we originally got here and seven of my colleagues were here for that vote in 2021. So waiting on a report on the amount that would affect the other customers that use our water, which it's more than just residents, right? It is industry customers outside of the city. It is industry, customers outside of the city. I'm just asking that the residents be given some type of relief. And then again, we have 4.1 million. It's more than that right now. Last time it was 4.1, for interest?
I don't think you can use general fund dollars to subsidize water bills.
No. It wouldn't be a subsidizing water bills. It'd be reducing the fee and then using the general funds to.
No. Yeah, it would be. I mean, what you're describing is a subsidy, yes.
But the, besides, that's, the water bill is a separate fund, a separate fund anyway, the water.
Yes, yes, yes. And I don't remember this 2021, but that would be something that you would look at when you are calculating the water fees. I mean, I can't tell you what kind of an impact that would have overall, but as you said, Councilman Balls, the late fees go into the fund and then that affects the overall rate. So I think a change like this would impact the rates. I'm looking at my watershed. So you would need to recalculate the rates when you do this.
Well, on that same point, I know for a fact that people in the city of Saginaw pay more for their water than people who live outside the city. And that's, is definitely some BS. I mean, we, on some of, I know some of the bug rates are cheaper in some areas. Am I right or wrong? Okay, then, so that mean they paying less?
They're not paying less because of our water rates. They're paying less because they are not paying for the last 30 years of retiree healthcare for the city, the last 30 years of pensions and so on. That's what makes our rates higher. They have different rate structures because of the way that their local unit is run.
Seems to me like their local unit is running over our water department.
No.
We paying more money than them.
If we go back and look at it, when we started talking about the increase in the water, the majority of us were at this table. And there were other council members. And it came up before, before your time. And, and when he talks about the different rates and stuff, that was true. And so all of that was took into consideration. I guess my question, and I know Mayor Protem had a question, is if they can't tell us how much we gonna save, then why are we talking about it? Because based on, no, based on what the studies was, you said back in 2021. And if this happened in 2021, it's 2024. Why are we just talking about it? In 2021, if we talked about this, what happened if we didn't go forward? That's my question.
But I would, I would say if, if this were brought up prior to miscellaneous business in this meeting, we could have contacted our rate consultants and gotten some rough numbers for you.
Mayor Protem, you have a question?
My understanding was that this motion was made in 2021 and was postponed indefinitely. And it was because we were waiting for the water rate study to come in. We got that water rate study and it was never brought back up. And I would not feel comfortable moving forward with it without having information on, as to how it would actually impact our water rates. Because it makes no sense to undo something like that if we don't have the math. And we've had three years to have them do the math. So waiting till the last meeting before an election at 8:00 under miscellaneous business is fiscally irresponsible.
Yes.
I just, I just got a comment too because Councilman Balls had talked about our water rates. And the manager talked about some of the other tangibles that are tied into the budget. But we also have to remember too that we own the infrastructure. We own the pipe, the plants. We have the, we process all the water for drinking. And we, we sell the water to 20 municipalities and we, we can't make a profit on it because we're a city. We're not a for-profit business. So they, and we have, we have agreements with some of them too because we share that expense with pump houses, right? I see Phil shaking his head. And so, so that's, that, and I just had this conversation with quite a few people the other day. And then once I explained it to them, then they're like, oh, okay, I get it. You know, because we have the infrastructure here, so. And looking at the infrastructure, when we looked at our rates, we have $140 million in infrastructure grades over 10 years. And we've spread that out so that we only had to raise the rates a couple of dollars. Because we're looking for grants, right, Phil? Yep, he's shaking his head. Okay, thank you. We're trying to keep it down as it is, so.
Any other questions? Yes.
Thank you. After 2021, it was a 4% rate increase without any type of reduction in the penalty amount. I thought that's what we were originally waiting on. The 1% originally proposed from 10 to 1 for the penalty fee, it was speculated that it would be 3% added on to the 4% increase for water rates in, in total. So that was just part of the reporting. If it's not a significant drop like 9% of a water penalty fee and more in line, and again, you go, you can look at the numbers. Saginaw pays the most for a late fee penalty in this state. And reducing it to somewhere like Grand Rapids for 5% is not fiscally irresponsible, but it is correcting something. Where Saginaw had years of getting a 10% reduction or 10% late fee. And to right-size it would be something that the citizens would definitely appreciate and need.
Yes, Councilman.
I would like to reiterate that I would like to get a report on the pros and the cons of this motion, especially considering over the last couple of weeks, talking to citizens. And one of the criticisms of council has been making uninformed decisions like this. The more research we have in order to make decisions, the citizens feel that would be a better thing for us to do. So I think that's the way we should go. Just, I mean, obviously, you won't be here. I may not be here, but at least the council that is here will be able to make an informed decision on this motion.
Yes, Councilman.
Just, just thank you for everyone. And I guess I'm, I want to speak not as a councilman, but as a, a resident who this year had some of the hardest financial challenges. And I am one of those ones who got that late fee. But also as a council member, this is something that we have experienced. And I don't like the narrative because what it makes it look like is we talk about collaboration, working with city staff. And I can say that if this was brought to our city staff, tonight, we could have voted on such a policy that impacts our residents that I know I may have benefited from. But because of the way, once again, this has been brought out to make, not only make this motion, which can be beneficial, but to make our staff look like a surprise and they're not, they don't have the information to actually speak. For me, that's not right. We've done this, let's do it right. Let's, not saying I'm against this, but let's just do it right. Let's make sure that our city staff can actually be prepared to answer any questions that we have and we can move forward. But right now, I know it's the last who are out, but it's, it's, let's be wise with our decision-making. Not saying it's wrong, but we got a bigger responsibility right now. It's election, I don't care about the election year. We have to do a better job as a council to show our community that we are not uninformed voters. We know what we're talking about. And right now, I can't say, as a council member, I know what I'm talking about. I don't know anything.
Madam Mayor, please. I mean, if you ask a question in here, then that's the job of the city to go out and get the answers and bring them back to us. That's their job. That's their job. Fair and simple.
Mayor Moore, I just have to say, our city managers had just to educate us on how, why our rates are the higher rates for the city of Saginaw. So again, that's something if we were voting on, we should have known that ahead of time. So again, we're asking questions that make us look like novices and we're about to make a major impact for our city. So that, so right now, let's do what's better for the, best for the city of Saginaw.
Mayor Protem.
We've had three years where those council members that wish to see this pass have had three years to have that information brought back to us. It could have been, been in a management update. We could have asked four months ago to have them present this information. So we didn't feel that we were being asked to vote on something that we didn't have a full understanding of. It is fiscally irresponsible to make a decision when you don't know what the impact is. You, you cut the, the late fees, sure. But if we don't know what impact that has on the across-the-board rates for people and you end up raising rates ultimately, nobody's gonna be pleased with that.
Madam Mayor, may I please call for a question, please?
Call for the vote. Please be second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk, can you give me the original motion?
It is to reduce the water bill penalty fee from 10% to 5%.
The motion has been read. No more discussion. Calling for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can't read it. I'm not hearing the right ayes and nays.
Can you read the motion again?
To reduce the water bill penalty fee from 10% to 5%.
Right.
Did everybody hear it? We basically had a split out and a no. So I need to get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Balls?
No.
Mayor Protem Bench?
No.
Councilmember Oystash?
No.
Councilmember Garcia?
Nay.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Copeland?
No.
And Mayor Moore?
No.
You have two yes and seven no, the motion is denied.